Good evening, and we are ready to start the meeting for the Planning and Zoning Board of DeCuesta, and we'll call that to order right now. Meg, will you take roll call, please?
Yes. Leslie Dasher.
Here.
Teresa Maggio.
Here.
Elizabeth Shauer.
Here.
Sherri Ambrose.
Here.
Jean McElDowney.
Here.
Marisa Thiri.
Here.
Marco Badas.
Here.
Jared Gaylor. Thank you.
Thank you. And if I can, has everybody looked over the agenda? And if I can have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. And have you all had a chance to look over the meeting minutes from October 17?
Yes.
Sir, is everything? Any changes? No?
There's a slight staff adjustment that Marco was listed as absent, but he was actually there, so we'll go ahead and update that.
Sorry. I didn't either. Yeah, I missed that one. Okay. Okay, so with that change.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the October 17, 2024 meeting.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion passes. The minutes are approved.
That's with the change.
Oh, with the change, correct.
Yes.
Okay, tonight, we have one item. It's SPM 5-24, application from Nate Albers for a site plan modification for renovations to existing 63, 150 square foot building and surrounding landscaping in the C3 general commercial zoning district. Megan?
Can everybody hear me okay?
And if I could, can I swear you in and any applicants before we start?
Sure.
Thank you. Could you raise your right hand for me? And any applicants who are going to speak? This is a quasi judicial item, so do you all swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
We do.
Thank you all very much. And before you begin, let me just ask the Planning and Zoning Board for any ex parte disclosures. Any discussions outside?
None.
None.
Thank you.
I do drive by there every minute.
That's fine. If you did a site visit, that's a good one to disclose, if you actually went there for the purpose of looking at the site, but if you just happened past, you're okay.
Yeah, just around.
Perfect, thank you.
Yep. All right, thank you for allowing me the time to present to you 358 Cypress Drive, the Site Plan Modification 524. So 358 Cypress Drive is located in the C3 zoning district. The proposed use is a private car museum. This requires a site plan review by the Planning and Zoning Board. You have the general authority to review and make regulation-based recommendations to council. Additionally, a special exception use is required for this proposed private car museum. The special exception use will be reviewed by village council in conjunction with the site plan modification that you guys are going to be looking at today. Here we have our overhead images of the subject location. You can see DeCuesta Drive is to the north, and to the east is the Village of DeCuesta Landscape Easement. These images here are, if you were driving west on DeCuesta Drive and you were going to turn south onto Cypress, kind of the evolution of what the area looks like. So on DeCuesta Drive, heading south, we have oak trees, we've got shade trees, palm trees, landscapes, shrubbery. As we continue south, we see a reduction in the landscaping. And then finally, when we come to the subject property at 358, you see that there's very, very little landscaping there.
Okay.
So criteria for review, you folks will be looking at harmony with other buildings and with the surrounding, the facade, method of design, exterior lighting, and appropriate building styles, garage design, exterior forms, and the use of anecidolic colors, exterior storage, and display of merchandise. Here is the proposed elevation for 358 Cypress Drive. As you can notice, there are shade trees now included to the rear of the property and on the side, and they have included some living green walls, which is very interesting, to the front of their landscaping. History: constructed in the 70s, 358 Cypress Drive was previously an auto repair establishment. The site has received multiple cold complaints in the past, and the village has no permits on file reflecting any sort of meaningful improvement for the past 50 years. Development Review Committee did gather on August 20th. It said representatives from community development, police, fire, building, landscaping, utilities, civil and traffic. Again, the special exception use, the site plan modification will be reviewed by village council in conjunction with the required special exception use. The Planning and Zoning Board is not required to provide a recommendation to the village regarding this special exception. Nonconformities: while the building currently does not comply with setbacks, the proposed renovation does not worsen any existing nonconformities. This allows the applicant to proceed without having to bring all of these elements fully up to compliance. Now, the applicant recognized the lack of landscaping on the site, proposed an elevated landscaping design enhancing that 50-foot Village of DeCuesta landscape buffer and median at Cypress Drive. The applicant has agreed to maintain that 50-foot landscape easement, and they will establish the Cypress Drive median until an establishment inspection can take place. Here is the landscaping plan. You can see the subject site, which is inside the dash line, and then to the east is the enhanced landscape buffer. As you can see, this goes farther north than the subject site and farther south. It's got lots of large trees involved in it and some trunks. And then up the middle, you have that meandering path. And here is the proposed Florida-friendly landscaping. You've got dumbo limbo, Japanese blueberry, liveboughs, and silver buttonwood. And they have also proposed the following flowering trees and palm trees. Conditions of approval: so this first condition of approval is basically going to state that the property owner is going to maintain that 50-foot landscape easement after they establish the landscaping, and that's going to be moving forward. A new addition, a draft maintenance agreement shall be provided to the village prior to issuance of the first building permit and shall be executed prior to the issuance of the CO. The second one pertains to the Cypress Drive median, and basically it states the applicant is going to install the landscaping that they proposed. There will be an establishment inspection done by the village, and that's going to be 90 to 120 days after. And then the applicant will replace any landscaping that dies within a year of the village accepting maintenance. Number three is regarding the trees. Just notifying them that the hat-wracking practice is completely against our code. Four through eight again are head to general sitekeeping conditions, and number nine is a new addition. A special exception approval shall be required prior to site plan approval. Development application has met the requirements of Section 78 334. The notice of hearing was advertised on December 2nd, and the property has a public notice sign posted December 2nd. If Planning and Zoning Board finds the proposed renovation is consistent with aesthetic standards, it shall vote to recommend the site plan modification. Do we have any questions? Thank you for your time and attention. And we have a presentation from the applicant. Oh? Look at it. Can you do that a little bit?
I would love that. Thank you, Meg. Good evening, members. For the record, Donaldson hearing with Kotler and Hearing here tonight on behalf of Mr. Albers and South Cypress Drive LLC. And we're excited to be here. This piece of property, as Meg pointed out, and she did a beautiful presentation, was built back in the 70s, so well over 50 years. You could almost call it historic. Unfortunately, there's nothing worthy of saving, although we are restoring the existing building. It's just no love has been put into the building at all. And Meg, is that in view? There we go.
Pointed this way.
We also have our architect, Mr. Joe Thomas, with Burris Thomas Architects. They're an award-winning University of Florida architect, Go Gators, located right here in Palm Beach Gardens, and we do a lot of work with Joe and his firm, and so they've done a great job on the project. As pointed out by Meg, the site is located on Cypress Drive, just south of DeCuesta Drive, on the east side of the road adjacent to the railroad. Site's relatively small, so it's about a 4.4 acre site, and our building's a little bit over 6,000 square feet in size. In its existing condition, I think that there's very little, if any landscaping at all, that even would exist on the site. The site is located within the C3 zoning district, and all the properties surrounding us, so identified on the screen there, are also within the same C3 zoning district. This was the site, what it looked like before Mr. Albers closed on the property. So Mr. Albers has purchased it. It was just cars everywhere, many of them dilapidated, broken down. The tenants that were operating under the former ownership didn't even have business tax receipts, so it was in great disrepair. So we're really excited to have the opportunity to really elevate the experience on Cypress Drive, really to make it something that's worthy of the Village of DeCuesta. So Nate is a resident. He is in the process of building a corporate office just over the DeCuesta boundary in Jupiter, and this will be an ancillary facility that he'll utilize as a part of his overall business operation for not only entertaining his clients, but also his employees in a small office that he'll have in this facility as well. So this is a rendering of the site plan, and as Meg pointed out, we are enhancing the railroad area, the 50-foot strip which extends all the way up to DeCuesta Drive. We will be doing landscaping and irrigation. I think 95% of all the plant materials that are proposed within that area will be native Florida plant materials, certainly Florida-friendly. We've worked with your utility department. One of the things that we learned as we were going through the processes is that there's a very, very large exfiltration trench that runs right down the middle, about where the trail is that runs through the middle, that's in excess of like 15 feet wide. So it basically takes water, purifies it, and puts it into the water. So our plantings have been coordinated with your utility department, and we've actually provided them access to the property through our site as well. Our request is for a site plan review and approval, and then there'll be a subsequent special exception request for a private museum pursuant to the code amendment approved by your council earlier this year. Oops, let me go backwards here. So the building itself will have about 4,850 square feet of what we refer to as display area. I think we have about, there'll be about 13 areas for museum-quality automobiles, and then other display areas in the building for display of other art and artifacts that would be inside the building. We meet the minimum requirements for parking based on the established parking code that was put in place by the city. So here's an enlargement of the site plan. So we're adding landscape islands in the front. We're enhancing the landscape islands on either side of the property. We'll be, this one median that's immediately to the west of the building is the one median in DeCuesta Drive that's not fully landscaped, so we're going to be landscaping it consistent with the other median's landscape, and then we will maintain it through establishment, and then ultimately the village will maintain that as they maintain the other areas. As far as the area along the railroad, we will be maintaining that. So we're putting in irrigation and landscaping. The grasses just would be bahia sod in that area, so it's again intended to be low maintenance because it's native plant material, but we want it to look nice, and it will be irrigated. We do have some green walls against the building that are incorporated as a part of the architectural design, and even some small planters within the parking areas to provide as much green space and landscaping area that we can to really make this feel fresh. And I can assure you, it really will look great. If any of you have been up to the little beach house vet that we did not too long ago, just on the north side of DeCuesta Drive, this is going to have that same kind of, it's going to look wonderful when it's done, in the same exact way. Landscaping, you can see I'm happy to walk you through any of the details if you have questions, but a really nice palette of basically coastal Florida plants that are naturalized to the DeCuesta area that we know that will do well and will provide a great aesthetic for the building and will be sustainable in the long term, which is something that we look at. As a landscape architect, that's something that's very important to me. Here's the building design, as was pointed out, very nicely done, very nicely articulated, a nice use of materials, and our architect is here today. We are working with the existing structure that's there and kind of re-skinning the existing structure. So we have some limitations, but I think we've been able to really do a nice job with that. This would be the interior, so the little oval elongated areas would be positions where automobiles would be placed. There's some sitting areas, some office areas. And in addition to utilizing this as a part of Mr. Albers' overall global business strategy, he will be making the facility available to the nonprofits within our community for philanthropic events, because that's, you know, he wants to be sure he's a part of the community since he lives in DeCuesta. And so we'll be reaching out to a lot of the different communities, nonprofits, and assisting like Hannah's Home would be one of them that we've discussed in the past. Again, the building, as far as the various pieces inside, there'll be different models, cars, art, and as well as military memorabilia that Mr. Albers has. And he is here today if you had any questions of him. We meet all of the criteria of your code, dealing with the aesthetics, harmony with other buildings, the surrounding area, our facade is harmonious. We're proposing no signage on the building other than addressing, and there's no advertising proposed, no symbolic elements that would be on the building. So, you know, we're really hopeful that this will kind of create a renaissance of this northern part of Cypress Drive, and other people will come back and invest in it as much as Mr. Albers is planning to do so. So special exception will go before the village council sometime next month. And with that, I'm more than happy to answer any questions that you may have. Our architect, Mr. Thomas, is here, and Nate is here, and we thank you very much and staff for a great job in putting together the staff report.
Thank you. Meg, who's?
Would you have a comment card?
Okay.
I have a question.
Okay, did you want to talk to him? Okay.
Do you have, excuse me, do you have the color renderings for the building, the Blue Archive, the Arizona Canyon?
Yes, ma'am.
And the sea?
Ma'am, for the record, I have a color and material board right here, and I'll bring it up, and you can pass around. We can leave this with the village when we're done.
Thank you.
I'll start.
Yeah, start with her.
Okay. I don't know if this question is for you or for the architect, but could somebody please explain to me what the thermally, it's on A2-01, thermally modified wood siding. Is that hardy plank right there?
No.
What type of material?
Joe Thomas, the architect.
I'm sorry.
I'm the architect, Joe Thomas. The siding is actually real wood, but it's pressure and heat-treated and has a 25-year lifetime warranty.
It's a 25-year warranty?
Yes. Yeah, so it's real wood, not hardy board.
Pretty colors.
Yeah, I like how they did that, yeah. And the Arizona, that just kind of like puts, you know, it was hard, I mean, I looked it up and I couldn't figure it out, so.
I really like the plants going up the wall. It was really tracks.
Yeah.
Oh, well.
Okay.
Can I ask the follow-up question on the colors before you leave? It's hard to think about how you do harmonious colors in an area that's not attractive, right? We don't want you to continue to make it look ugly. So I'm curious how you landed on the blue. I think it looks beautiful. There's nothing quite like it around it, so I'm just curious if you can explain, is it like a complementary color, or is that kind of the thinking there?
Yeah, it's a coastal color. And yeah, we actually got a lot of feedback from some of the staff and the owners going back and forth, and from Don's office to come up with that color.
Okay, so staff had input in the selection of that color? Okay, thank you.
I would say in the hopes that others will follow.
Yeah.
Of course, yes.
Yeah, because it just, I personally think, once the building is done, it's just, I mean, I was on Cypress Drive at the yellow building earlier today, and I had just said to the graphic gentleman, I said, you know, I said, "In the past 10 years, I've seen such a change in Cypress Drive, and there's more businesses and stuff, and I think that when this is all done, this will definitely enhance." But I do have a question about the fence.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, it's a slide gate with a, not the switch, so that the Fire, DeCuesta Fire Rescue, but how were you going to lock it originally? Is it going to be like a key code thing, or?
It will, it'll either be a key code or an RFID reader, which basically would read, you know, RFID when somebody pulled up to it.
Yeah.
It doesn't even need a clicker, it just has a.
Yeah, like a garage door clicker, whatever.
Yeah, so that would be what we would anticipate, and then for the fire department, they want click to enter, so that they could just click their code, and it would automatically open. And you also, in the event that power was out, then you do a knox box.
Yeah. Okay, so what made you think of the architecture of that fence? I mean, it's different, I mean.
Yeah, go ahead.
It's not something that you see every day.
Yeah, we wanted to upgrade the fence, and we didn't want to use a typical chain link or a solid wall, and so we felt that this kind of broke up the scale and made the fence more aesthetically pleasing.
Well, you did. I mean, you enhanced it, and I mean, it was just, okay, yeah, because, you know, I'm like, okay, I have my notes here, please explain how, I mean, it's just really, it's awesome. And what I liked also was the, oh, it's not up there, the light pole, the detail for the top of the pole is so, is so different. I mean, I haven't seen anything like that. I mean, you really, you really enhanced it, and if this doesn't give, I'm sorry, but if this doesn't give your neighbors
Yeah.
A kick in the pants into, kind of like, you know, to enhance their buildings, I mean, it's just really, my hat goes off. I mean, you spent a lot of time and a lot of money, but I do have one question for Jay.
Okay.
They're spending all of this money on the back for the FEC, and then it's dead right after him.
Sure.
So what's going to go on down after that?
So I mean, the idea would be that ideally, if everything redevelops, they would do a similar thing, or perhaps, again, just like they're setting the palette for the architecture for the rest of Cypress Drive, they're going to be doing the same thing back there. The village owns that property, so if what they do looks great and there's some desire for it, the village could also, we could apply for grants, we could put something in our capital improvements and do it ourselves. So it is, what they're doing was in our commercial corridor master plan from 2022 to do that. And Steve Parker, the village's landscape architect, actually did some preliminary concept designs for the village to pay for it, and we kind of used those, shared them with these folks, and they kind of took it on. So essentially, they're really kind of doing this, enhancing this for the public.
Is, what, what do you do, like, to expand it, to go all of the way down to work with the town of Jupiter, to have them do the same? What I'm trying to envision is like another linear park, you know, just, you know, how do you go about doing that? It's been a while since I've been in politics doing all of that.
Yeah, we'd have to have a meeting with, it'd really be the village manager and Jupiter's town manager kind of having a kickoff about that. But I think them starting this and doing this is kind of the genesis to have that conversation start.
I think it's paving the way.
Yes, exactly.
Paving the way to get there.
There we go.
The only disappointment is that it's private. We can't see those cars. I want to peek through the window.
Mr. Albers will be doing some things with the village and with the village council and with, yeah, absolutely. And part of our thought process in designing the linear park area is that, you know, we have Brightline that now comes by here with, you know, thousands of people, you know, a week, and it's important that, you know, the community kind of really look good. So as Jeremy said, we've kind of created now a template that's like plug and play. So it's, we've already worked out all the issues with engineering and all the things that need to be done, so it would be really easy for the village or for another property owner to just continue doing that. So I mean, I can see someday going and having lights going down there, everything, but it could be really pretty interesting.
Thank you. I mean, it's just.
It's beautiful.
And Mr. Thomas, right here, I'm sure it's here, I'm not seeing it. How do you get the cars in the building? I didn't see a.
There's the thing on the side.
Yeah, there's garage doors.
Garage doors.
Yeah, I think we're, I forget the count, I think we have five in the front. But they look more like real.
Almost like a roll-up door, right?
Yeah.
I just didn't see it on.
Yeah.
It's the side view, like, most of the way through the back. You can see where the rolling dock doors are.
Yeah.
I'm trying to think of the page on our side.
It's intended to make it not look like their garage doors, right? So we're trying to trick you with the awnings that are added on and the landscaping that's in between there, you know, because aesthetically, we want it to look beautiful.
Yeah.
Yeah, the garage doors are designed to look like glass storefronts.
It does.
Well, the whole building looks industrial, you know, modern industrial, and definitely would hope that it would get the other businesses, and it might even draw, you know, your private events might, or, I mean, Mr. Albers, might help draw more people to that area if they see some of the businesses that are there. It's kind of like an advertisement for some of those extra businesses that are there, so that would be, be nice to perk up that area, definitely.
Can I do just a couple comments and a question? So one comment, I appreciate the windows are kind of reminiscent to of the modification that we approved for Light House, and you can finally now see the Art Center has their new doors installed. And I think this kind of is in keeping with Aura, so I wasn't sure if that was the inspiration for some of the look and feel of it, too, like the connection there. The question is, and I just, I know we're really focused on the aesthetics of this, but when we did this, the special category discussion sometime back, the big conversation, I think, was around economic development and this being sort of in the C3 district. Certainly, you made a point about saying that we don't even know what the sales tax being collected out of here was because of the record keeping and things like that. I noticed the office in there. I'd be curious if you can comment on if there's going to be any other economic activity associated with it. I understood it seemed more like a private office, it's not really going to have economic gain. I think the property tax gain here is significant in what you're doing for the area. I'm just curious to get a comprehensive picture of if there's other economic benefit associated with the facility.
Well, for the record, Donaldson hearing, the economic benefit would be with the fundraisers and our commitment to work with the community, that would be one. But also, Mr. Albers' business is global, and he brings people in, clients in from all over the world, as well as his employees that live in the Jupiter-DeCuesta area. And so this is, you know, part of the amenity of his business, and it will help him continue to grow his business, obtain top talent, and which, I mean, he has a very substantial business, and help him recruit the people that he needs to recruit. So I think that there will be some really good economic benefit, and of course, the tax benefit will be triple what it is, you know, substantially more than what it is today.
Property tax, not sales tax, got it.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions for the presenters?
Nice conference room.
I wouldn't mind taking a call now.
I wouldn't mind going there.
Okay, I think we're ready to open public comments.
I do have a comment card here. Marisa Thiri.
Maria, if you'll state your name and full address for the record, please.
Marisa Thiri, I live in the country club. I'm an alternate. I might need a few minutes.
Great, can you start with the three-minute clock, please?
All right. The one acre village-owned land behind the subject property is a strategically important property to the village and residents for several reasons. is a strategically important property to the village and residents for several reasons. First, residents have asked for more park space. Second, even under the village's own code and comprehensive plan, the village is not providing adequate park space in the village. Third, this one acre is a critical strategic location that the village and residents have an immensely valuable interest in. And it should not be handed off to a private interest in this way with no compensation and no provision for the use of this land as a park for residents. It would be a complete dereliction of duty for this board and the council to provide no assurances or guarantees to protect the interests of village residents in this property that is owned by the village for the residents. No private interest would behave this way if they owned this land instead of the village. There is a serious problem with allowing the landscaping and use of village-owned property by a private interest, particularly that of an adjacent property owner. For this reason, the application should be rejected. In 2021, some of the council tried to sell the village-owned property behind the applicant's property. In fact, they practically tried to give it away to a private interest multiple times in a similar fashion. Fortunately, residents spoke up then and a majority of members stopped the fire sale of this acre of village land. The context here is important because this property is strategically located in the center of the village's small commercial district and next to the railroad. In May 2023, council considered two plans for landscaping the village-owned land behind the applicant's property. The council then, four of whom are still on the council, clearly said they preferred the plan that did not include a walking path, which begs the question, why, is there one here? The council said they wanted a passive space with landscaping. And yet this proposal is to make it an active space with a path without any of the protections that the council also identified as necessary to make it safe for pedestrians to use, like a fence on the property line with the railroad. The village residents would, I'm sure, be delighted if the applicant proposed to donate trees or shrubs to the village for this property, which definitely needs to be cared for more. However, this does not appear to be a donation so much as an attempted appropriation of the village-owned land as a practical matter. On page 42 of the design, there's both a gate and a door that opened from the back fence onto the village-owned land and onto the proposed grass lawn. This is remarkable and unacceptable. In effect, this proposal creates a backyard for this property out of the land that is owned by the village and held in trust for residents. And based on the two separate entrances on that fence, which are inaccessible to the general public, it appears that the applicant intends to treat this space as a backyard for his property. That is extremely problematic. There is currently a no trespassing sign at the Dequesta Drive entrance to the village-owned land. The village's current posture is that no one should be on that land. The village council reaffirmed that at the meeting last year. If the general public is not permitted on publicly-owned land, it should not be permitted that the applicant can have it for personal use. But there is another problem beyond the issue of private use of public land, and that is liability. I have a very important point today.
Thank you, Marie. Any other public comment?
Just Donaldson hearing for the record. Just wanted to let, you know, let the speaker as well as this board know that there's absolutely no intent to privatize that land. This is 100% for the public. And, you know, if the village doesn't want us to do it, we, I mean, the gates were there to provide maintenance because we agreed to irrigate, landscape, and install maintenance. This, I mean, we don't even have windows, I think, on that side of the doors of the building, do we? Yeah, we have one, one door. So there's absolutely no, I agree with what, what the young lady said completely. This is village land. It's cannot be, should never be sold, should never be privatized. But one of the things that you do want people to do is, in, in, in planning perspectives, is again, not privatize it, but you want, you do want eyes on that area. If you want that to be a safe place where people will feel comfortable walking or playing or whatever, you want eyes on the space. It makes it a SEPTED crime prevention through environmental design principle that you would, that you would want to occur there. So as far as the walking path, I think that that was something that was suggested to us to add for the, for the master plan comments. We don't need to do that. We put together a design in collaboration with the utility department, which really dictated where the plantings could be because of the infrastructure in the beginning. But no intent, that, we, we've actually provided a gate and an access point so that your utilities department could go through our parking lot to access it to maintain the public utility. So there, there's no intent. And we're fine with any conditions of approval that this board might feel would be necessary to ensure that that is intended for the public. We want it to look good because our building's behind it, but that's it. We're, I doubt we'll ever use it other than look at the pretty plants.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'd love to hear yours. We can get together after we're done.
Okay, if there's no other public comment, we'll close public comment. And board comments or questions?
Jay, do you have anything?
No, other than there will, there's a new condition where we're going to require a maintenance agreement. So that maintenance agreement will spell out a lot of things like public access. And alleviate, I think, some of the things that Ms. Sapiri brought up there, but that's all I have.
Well, now, there's no, there won't be any public com, uh, public access through the property, though. It'd be all behind it.
Correct.
Okay, okay. And any other comments?
No. I would like to make a motion to approve.
Uh, recommend approval? We're recommending.
We're recommending.
I've recommended approval of SMP-5-24.
I'll second it.
And before you call for the vote, if I could just make sure that the maker of the motion and the secondor of the motion are in agreement that the nine conditions that were read by the planner are to be imposed. They're in your staff report?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so the maker of the motion is in agreement with those conditions, the secondor?
And what about with the maintenance agreement?
That was one of them.
That's one of them.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So the maker, on the record, the maker is in agreement with the, your motion is to approve with the conditions as stated by staff, is that correct?
Well, yeah, that's what I.
And the secondor is in agreement with that?
Absolutely.
Okay, very good. Madam, sure you may call for the vote.
Okay, so the motion on the floor is to recommend approval of SPM 5-24.
With all conditions.
Subject to the conditions. Subject to all conditions, as written in the record. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
We have one more thing here. Okay, so staff comments, your?
Just, just a quick housekeeping thing that we have next year's agenda, our next year's meeting schedule in there. So one of the meetings falls on Juneteenth, which is actually a holiday for the village now. So we'll, we'll probably adjust that as it comes closer. Sometimes we don't even have meetings, so we'll see what it's looking like as it gets closer. If anything jumps out, let us know. Next month, we'll be bringing back the infrastructure SRTACs, which is a yearly thing you look at. We just, sometimes it's December, sometimes it's January. This year, it'll be, it'll be in January. Trying to think what else. I think that's, I think that's all we have.
Okay. Okay, great. Okay, I guess we're ready to.
Well, I, but what I like is that you're giving the application date deadline. And are you going to put that on the website?
That's already on the website.
Well, I didn't have a chance.
Just, just saying. We work with people on it, though. It's, it's there, you know, we, we can fall back on it, but we try to be flexible. There's times we can, we can push things quicker.
Okay. Do we need to make them approve this or?
Well, just, that's just for our information.
Just housekeeping, you don't have to.
I already put the dates in my calendar.
It's the third Thursday, so there's not much wiggle room unless there's a unique thing.
Yeah. Okay, if we're ready to adjourn?
Well, we need public comments.
I'm sorry?
If there's any public comments. Okay. I'll make a motion to adjourn then.
I'll second it.
Don't fight over it.
All opposed?
Everyone have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you, same to you.
Let me text my husband and tell him to start on dinner.